Good evening. Hello, hello. Can everyone please have a seat? I should be a teacher. That was great. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. The Board of Education is interested in encouraging members of the public to share their ideas, comments, and questions. Public participation opportunities will be available at the beginning and end of this meeting, and as stated in Board policy, no person shall speak for more than three minutes, and each period of public participation will be limited to 30 minutes. If you have any questions or concerns regarding matters on the consent agenda through the Items for Discussion, Items 1 through 4, it may be important for you to utilize the first public participation opportunity. You may also send your feedback and questions to us through our email, boe@farmingdaleschools.org. Questions will be shared with members of the central administrative team, who will respond in a timely fashion. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of fire and/or if you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. Please use the nearest exit, which is in the back of the room to my right. Please now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. DeFandini, may we have your monthly update, please?
Of course, Mr. Morales. As has become our custom, I'm going to ask the Board of Education to please join me in the front of the stage as we begin to recognize some of the excellent things that have been happening in our district over the course of the last month, and in some instances, a little bit before then. So Board members, please join us up in the front. I'll get the podium all set, and we'll get started. Just wanted to welcome everybody to this evening's meeting. One of the customs that we have begun over the course of the last several months ago was to celebrate excellence. There are so many wonderful things that happen here in Farmingdale, and as part of my monthly update, I have a responsibility to share out what some of those great things are that are happening here in the community. And after a little bit of consideration, we thought that that's kind of silly, that I'm sitting here talking about the wonderful things that our staff and that our students are doing, but we're not actually bringing the people who are doing those wonderful things to the actual meeting to be recognized. So we put our heads together and thought that we would make a modification to our meeting. So again, in continuance of that, I'm going to be presenting certificates to a few people who have done some exceptional things over the course of the past month, and again, in some instances, even before then. The first person or people that I'd like to recognize in the way that this is going to work, I'll call your name if you'd kindly come up on stage. Board member has a certificate for you, and then I will take my time to thoroughly embarrass everybody that does come up on stage. So without further ado, if you're in the audience, and again, please respect the fact, and I certainly respect the fact, that we have some very busy people. We have busy faculty and students. We have busy students. I'm sorry, faculty and staff, and we have busy students, so not everybody might be here. But I'd like to think that most of the people here weren't able to make it on their busy schedule, so if Anthony Agrello and Danielle Kelly are in the audience, could you please come on up on stage? And I'd like to recognize and bring up on stage as well, if you're in the audience, Ms. Pietro Negro, Mr. Gavales, Ms. DiPiero, and Mr. Cloud, if you're in the audience, please come on up on stage, too. Excellent. So for those of you that might not be aware or might not have been connected to the news recently, we have a hero in our midst this evening. Sixth grader Danielle Kelly jumped into action when his classmate Anthony Agrello started "In their words, not mine, I got out of my seat really fast. I looked around to see what was happening, and I just started to do it," Kelly said. With his airway cleared, Anthony's breathing returned to normal. "It felt good knowing I had a friend that would be there for me," said Agrello. Ms. Pietro Negro taught the Heimlich Heroes program to all of the Howitt Middle School students during health class earlier this school year. Not sure whether or not she thought it would be used so quickly, but here we are, just a few months later, one of our students saving the life of another student. Students watched videos and were able to provide little practice routines on how to recognize the signs of choking and how to respond with the Heimlich maneuver. Mrs. DiPiero responded by saying, regardless of a student's age, size, or strength, they can successfully dislodge an item from someone's throat when choking to save a life. The Heimlich maneuver is very easy to learn and a great first step for students of all ages to begin learning lifesaving techniques. Thank you, Ms. DiPiero, for bringing this to our schools. Thank you for your thoughtfulness, Anthony and Danielle. You're a hero this evening. Congratulations. Enjoy your round of applause. Not everybody gets a standing ovation at your age, young man. I'd now like to bring up some members of our Delores. I'm going to call out names because I think I do have an inventory of who is supposed to be here this evening. If for whatever the reason I don't call your name, please still come up on stage. Let me know that I missed you. Be happy to make sure that I publicly recognize you. So in no particular order, Kami Fox, Casey Reinison, Sabrina Schwartz, Riley Walsh, Jada Torres, Nicolina Kane, Casey Boyle, Katie Beecher, Bella Licata, Grace Badwan, Teresa Kessler, Rachel Palillo, and coaches Jessica Baker and Lauren Scotty. And if I missed anybody, please come on up. Do not sit in the chairs if I missed your name. And Bella Fox. Farmingdale Delores went to three competitions this winter and came home with medals each weekend. The first competition was the Long Island Dance Team Association at Sachem High School North, where they received second place in medium varsity palm and third place in medium varsity dance. Second was another LIDTA competition at Comac Middle School, where they received third place in all of our teams' dance, palm, and hip-hop. Stay there, stay there. I'm not done. No, that's okay. At the third was the National Dance Alliance, the NDA regional competition at Walt Whippen High School this past Sunday, where they scored third place in medium varsity dance, second place in medium varsity, and first place in large varsity hip-hop. Besides the winter competitions, they have performed at numerous boys' basketball games. In fact, they performed tonight at their senior game, as well as the Barclay Center five years running, not to mention during the fall season, they were a part of the marching band. The Delores are also the highlight of our elementary pep rallies, as well as every parade through the village. These young ladies and coaches have worked tirelessly to meticulously clean up dances and pushed through these extremely difficult routines. We are so excited and proud of their hard work. Congratulations on these strong performances, placing Farmingdale as a contender to be reckoned with throughout New York State. Something else was brought to our attention that was necessarily on my radar, but popped up through one of our teachers at Farmingdale High School, one of our physics teachers, and it made me ask the question, well, how many other people do we have here that have published some sort of a book, an article, a professional work that has had some impact on their actual craft? And I found out that there were a number of people, so I'm going to start by bringing a few people up and then, again, thoroughly embarrassing them. Katerina Bernius. Can you come on up, please, Katerina? So Katerina is currently a seventh grader at Howitt Middle School. Katerina started writing her book, The Magical Flower, while attending Albany Avenue, and it was published in December of 2020. The Magical Flower is about friendship and perseverance. Three best friends planted flowers together in the spring. One seed started to glow, and they figured it must be a magical flower. But when it dies in the winter, the friends won't have any flowers to play with. Will their flowers friend comes back next spring? It's a question you're going to have to find out by reading her book. I'd also like to bring up Naomi Luke. Naomi is currently an eighth grader at Howitt Middle School, who wrote a book titled Run To Your Run. Her book is a stirring tale about love, friendship, revenge, and freedom. Run To Your Run is for anyone who shares a deep marine interest and loves to unravel the mystery of its creatures. Naomi's book was officially published in July of 2022. Both of those books are also available on Amazon. We are very proud of Katerina and Naomi's accomplishments, which also include consistent placement on the honor roll. I'd like to now bring up three people over at Woodward Parkway who have published books. Dina Carlucci, Janet Shiner, and Oliver Olson, please join us up on stage. Had a chance to read all of these books. They are fantastic. Love that. Dina Carlucci is an AIS math teacher over at Woodward Parkway. She runs the math lab for grades one through five. She wrote not one, but two beautiful books. How Did You Know My Dad and As For Me, I'm Still Average. These two books encompass life and are written in such a way that you truly feel connected deeply to the characters. You can find both of her books on Barnes &amp; Noble. Janet Shiner. Janet is a first grade teacher at Woodward Parkway. She wrote a book called Journal to Shine, A 30-Day Guidebook for Attracting More Love, Abundance, and Happiness in Your Life. Book speaks of finding kindness and love in your life and everything you do. You can find her book on Amazon. And Oliver P. Olson, one of our second grade students at Woodward Parkway, always amazes me, writing books in second grade, wrote a book along with his father called Sunshine for My Soul Journal. This is a journal for children. The journal gives children a space to write and draw what is meaningful to them. It is set up in a way that children can learn to be reflective and empower their days. You can find Oliver's book on Amazon. I'd like to now welcome up two teachers from Farmingdale High School, Mr. Boyd and Take your time, Mr. Kozlowski. Mr. Boyd had a recent article published in Edgtopia, again, another fantastic article. The article is about service learning and encouraging empathy within our community through an NGSS-aligned project they do in our physics class. The article highlights how students can apply their knowledge of physics to solve problems in their communities, like studying inclined planes to gauge the effectiveness of wheelchair ramps in their school, which was a part of the project in Mr. Boyd's physics class. Mr. Kozlowski is a published songwriter with ASCAP, the American Society of Composers, Authors, and Publishers, for music written for the 1960s act Randy and the Rainbows, which was released on an album. He's also published music on an album released in the 1980s act by the name Entourage. Mr. Kozlowski has also recorded credits as keyboardist on albums released by the artists The Coasters and Darlene Love. Congratulations, Mr. Boyd and Mr. Kozlowski. And why don't you guys hang up here? We're going to get one more gentleman up here. Let's bring up Mr. Gelfer. Mr. Gelfer, come on up, Mr. Gelfer. That way you don't have to stand up here on stage by yourself, Mr. Gelfer. Sam Gelfer, our eighth grade orchestra director, is a published composer. He has worked for Orchestra Published with the Carl Fisher Music Publishing Company. His pieces include Frost on the Plow, Reverie, Pallavazzi and Dances, and Emerald Melodies. We are pleased to share that Farmingdale's own Sam Gelfer was selected as a featured composer with the music published Carl Fisher to appear at an ASTA as part of their Meet Our Composers booth in the exhibition hall, while in attendance, one of Mr. Gelfer's original compositions for string orchestra was performed in a reading session aimed at exposing teachers from all over the country to new and exciting literature for their school ensembles. One more round of applause to Mr. Kozlowski, who's actually going to be retiring at the end of this year. We turn our attention to the academics. We have a couple of special teams with us this evening, advisors Anne Grady, Samantha Lehman, and Director Krista Cummings. Can you please join us up on stage for our VEX robots? And I'd like to also welcome up any students that are in here, Ella Mayers, Michael Cox, Emily Domingo, Debeka, Krishna McCour, Hunter Bresnahan, Zakaius Rivera, Julia Rodriguez, Rianne Adamji, Madhav Rapelli, Bonang Hwang, Kevin Pham, Danny Leon, Brendan Perez, Ethan Agnetti, Bevis Jong, Madhav Rapelli, Audrey Malanga, Cyrus Abraham, Jason Wong, Jonah Baring, Spencer, oop, careful, Rustaiak, Nicholas Lin, Ali Ahmad, and Griffin Buxa. On February 4th... Hang on, hang on on stage, guys. On February 4th, the Farmingdale Robotics Team competed in the Freeport VEX Robotics Qualifier against 20 other robots in judged category skills, a head-to-head competition. This year's game resembles a robot version of Frisbee Golf. The Dailers took home the Think Award and the Innovate Award and defeated all opponents to also take the tournament champion title. Farmingdale has been the first East Coast high school to host VEX Robotics League Play. Our final night of league play will take place on Friday, February 10th. The teams earned two spots at the New York State Championship on 3-4 at the Harvey School in Cotonaw, New York. Okay, and some people are not going to be going far because you're going to be coming back up on stage, so some of our students don't go far. We're going to be celebrating our Science Bowl. Advisor Ashley Arroyo and Director Kristen Cummings, please join us back up on stage. So if you're already sitting, come back on up. And students, Rianne Adamji, Ali Ahmad, Wasim Ahmad. Come on up, guys. Bevis Jong and Mahad Rapelli, please come back up on stage. The U.S. Department of Energy's National Science Bowl is a highly-publicized national competition among teams of high school students who answer questions on scientific topics in astronomy, biology, chemistry, mathematics, physics, earth, computer, and general science. The winner of Brookhaven's regional competition will be sent to Washington, D.C. to compete in the national competition. Each year since 1991, Brookhaven National Laboratory has hosted the Long Island Regional Competition for the National Science Bowl. All high school students who attend the school on Long Island are eligible and invited to participate. Teams are comprised of five students, one of whom is an alternate, and a teacher who acts as an advisor and coach. The competition consists of round robin, followed by double elimination final. Questions are in the form of multiple choice and short answers in the categories of chemistry, biology, physics, mathematics, astronomy, general, earth, and computer science. Our Science Bowl Club completed the regional Science Bowl competition at Brookhaven National Lab this past weekend and came in third place. And last, but certainly not least, and just as a point of business, just two quick things. One, the people who are getting certificates tonight are getting blank certificates to make things a little bit easier for us on stage. You will get an actual certificate tomorrow with your name printed on it, so you will actually be getting the real thing within the next day or so, so just be patient for the real ones that will be coming. And the second is my sincere apologies for any mispronunciations of names. I promise I'm doing my absolute best up here. Some of the names definitely are a little new to me. I actually did, there's a pronunciation app on the internet that I've tried to use phonetically, but it's not actually as easy as you think it would be when trying to get this right. So again, I'm absolutely doing my best here. Our Ethics Bowl, advisors Jim Hughes and Jen Theo, and Director Sam Black, come on up. And students Nick Cohen, Alexa Frontino, Kiara Gómez Medina, Ava Lano, Ryan Sweeney, Melissa Trulick, Autumn Cannon, Michael Cox, Bailey Gayron, Jelani Harris, and Alexa Pangarelius. Congratulations to the Farmingdale Ethics Bowl team for making it to the Long Island Regional Ethics Bowl semifinals that took place Saturday, February 4th, at Hofstra University. The students have a series of cases that present a range of ethical issues and scenarios. They must present an argument, offer commentary on their opponent's position, and respond to judges' questions. The students competed in a field of 22 teams from across the region to discuss the ethics of various cases that examine the complexity of sentient artificial intelligence of Google's Lambda Project to the ethical questions surrounding the development of community culture schools. Both teams demonstrated the highest level of civic discourse and critical analysis with clarity and precision to address the most complex ethical and philosophical issues of our time. Congratulations very much to our Ethics Bowl team. If Ms. Kramer says one more, it's one more, guys. Thank you very much, everybody. For those people, children alike, that just received an award, we are going to begin with the formal portion of our board meeting. You're welcome to stay, but I know that people have a lot of stuff to do at home, lesson preparations, and plenty of people have studying to do, so for our students, you are more than welcome at this point in time to make your way out. Congratulations again as we get ready for the next portion of our meeting. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. Just a couple more quick update items that are not necessarily connected to the recognition portion of our meeting. I think you've gotten a chance to know the marriage between the new and making sure that we continue to pay homage to the great traditions of the past. One of the things that was a really big deal here in Farmingdale when I was a student, for many, many, many years ago, that is going to be coming back to fruition, it's going to be coming back to life this March. It's going to come back in a little bit of a different way, but for those of you that might remember have had kids that have been part of Sports Night. Sports Night was a really big deal in Farmingdale for many, many years, and with thanks to our unbelievable Athletics Department, with thanks to our Physical Education Department, and a lot of hard work that went into this. We are going to be bringing Sports Night back in the form of Green and White Night, which is going to be planned for March 6th at 6:00 PM. Again, the board members have already been welcomed. You can pay attention to our website for updated information. But again, it's an opportunity for our students to be part of a competition, you know, between and amongst themselves here in our schools. It is within our schools, but should pose to be an incredible evening. I remember the excitement of it when I was a student. I can only imagine that some of our young students are going to be really excited getting ready for that. So again, with thanks to our teachers and our administrators who have done a great job planning for that. One more, the budget process, as crazy as this is. Seems like it was just yesterday, but we're going to be back up here, you know, in about a month's time, starting our conversation with regard to the budget. All members of the community are welcome to be a part of that. The information pertaining to the budget presentation cycle will be available up on our website so that you can see the nature of the meetings and when you could be here to learn a little bit more about it. And the last piece is academic progress has been a topic of conversation, although I can't share any of the details because the data with regard to state testing is embargoed, and there's nothing that I can really share of a particular nature. I can say that I am excited for the data to actually become released this coming spring so we can talk a little bit more about how we did this past year. So again, a point of excitement for us. Can't go into the specifics, it is embargoed and I am not permitted by the state to talk about it, but within the next several months, we'll have that opportunity. We are very excited to be able to talk to the board and the community about some of the progress that we've made. With that, I'm going to begin the next portion of our meeting with regard to board goals. One of the goals that the Board of Education had for the upcoming school year as it pertains to our Human Resource Department. I'm going to ask Dr. Thompson to get himself set up here. If you could just give us a couple more minutes to transition one more time. Ask members of the Board of Education to jump out into the audience so we can begin the next portion of our meeting. Please. One, one other point, you could just keep coming on up. For anyone that's in the audience, that's still in the audience. If anyone is trying to go online to get the live-streaming portion, we did put a note up there. We're having technical difficulties with the live-streaming component of tonight's meeting. It will be recorded and available for the community and anyone else that's interested in watching the meeting in the coming days. But just know that we are having a problem technically with regard to the recording equipment. We hope to get ahead of that for the next month's meeting, but it will be publicly viewable within the coming days as soon as we have the recordings available and set up for the community. Thank you for your patience.
All right, so good evening to our Board of Education and folks in the audience. I want to start first, and this will be the only time that I really want to pay attention to this, but I need to acknowledge the folks that have supported and worked with me in the early months on the journey through HR. First and foremost, and most importantly, Ms. Mary Rogers, our Administrator for Personnel and Human Resources, who has had me under her expert tutelage as I navigate these waters through HR in the first beginning of these, these months. I also want to acknowledge in my office all of the staff that supports the processes in the Human Resources Department. So Dorothy, Michelle, Patricia, Rose, Marie, Liz, Nicole. Thank you, guys, for the support in terms of the processes in our office and keeping things moving, and of course, helping me navigate the waters in these early days. And I think, finally, the Human Resources Committee work. There were 14 colleagues involved in that work. Cordelia Anthony, Mary Rogers, again, Kerry Basilowicz, Sue Rogers, Kristen Cummings, Brian Norton, Gina Calasano, Kathy Sidowitz, Josh Anna Sensel, Marty Darkanti, Jen DeHaze, Joe Valentine, Patrick Classic, and Mike Fabraro. Thank you to those colleagues who I have just mentioned that have been a part of much of the work along the way with regard to the hiring, recruitment, and support staff professional development that you'll hear mention of as we go through the presentation. So what you're going to see here references the work in the beginning of the year, in August essentially, when we established some of the goals and indicators of success that we were going to monitor from Human Resources and hiring and recruitment in particular. So we wanted to make sure that we worked on specific or we engaged stakeholders in specific processes and fine-tuning. It's not an overhaul of what we were looking at in Human Resources, but it was enhancements. It was a review of some of the processes that we had in place already and how we could make them better. You'll also hear mention of the professional development that we've expanded to our teacher aides and monitors. We knew that there was a really strong process and foundation for how we mentor and support the professional development of our teaching staff, our instructional staff, and we were exploring ways to expand that to our teacher aides and monitors, and we're going to continue in that way in years forward. And finally, you'll see ways that we have started to celebrate the roles and responsibilities of all employees of the district. So there'll be, in some ways, chapters that we'll walk through, through these slides, that encompass those three topics particularly. So what you're going to see next is a riddle that will ask you to consider. The riddle is somewhat of a metaphor for what we're going to go through, through the slides, and at the end, you'll have an answer for that riddle. Some of you are already going to be familiar with what the riddle means, but I really want you to think about that as we close on the last slide when it's revealed what the actual source of that riddle is. So you'll see that first on the first slide, and then as we get through, by the end, you'll see the connection and why this is a metaphor for the work that we're engaged in. Um, you don't want to see me tap dance. And then when I'm down there in the pit, you'll have to figure out another way to finish the year. We'll need more than the Heimlich Kiro, yes. So here's the riddle. Consider for a moment what this may mean or what the answer to this would be, what I am. I'll find... we'll get back to that at the end in the last slide. You'll understand fully why this is a metaphor for the work that we're engaged in, as I mentioned. This takes us back to the August Board Retreat when we talked about specific goals and indicators of success, what we'd be embarked, what we'd be embarking on this school year in particular. And you're going to see mention and progress on all of these in particular, if not satisfied in most of these areas. And finally, The Portrait of a Graduate Work has been a symbol and something that lends, that we've looked at all of our work this year through. And you'll notice that the attributes in Portrait of a Graduate are represented in all things Human Resources, in all future candidates. We want them to represent all of these attributes. There's not really one that dominates more than others. So I really, truly believe and understand that all 10 of our attributes embody the future candidates that we are recruiting to Farmingdale Schools. As I mentioned, the three overarching goals were how we were training and providing professional development. We also looked at strengthening the learning community through that. What groups were not receiving the same levels of professional development that other groups were? And then how do we use a shared vision, a collaborative approach, to fine-tuning our hiring and recruitment process? So in establishing a shared vision, early on in July, specifically July 18th through October 18th, I had individual interviews with members of our hiring staff, our hiring managers essentially, its administrators, and people that would be involved in the process for hiring new staff. What we did is we met individually and we looked at three things essentially. What is it that you know you have to prioritize when there's a vacancy in your building? So how, when something comes up that's going to be filled, do you know that you're going to be triggered? How do you know you're going to have to prioritize your work? The second thing was, what are you passionate about when it comes to the hiring and recruitment process? So someone who is involved knows that they have to now be involved. What is it that they enjoy the most about the hiring and recruitment process? And finally, what's the greatest challenge for you with regard to the hiring and recruitment process? And then, in a sense, through looking at the qualitative data, I was able to establish some themes, a couple of discrepancies, but mostly themes. Those themes were used to establish the goals and the objectives of the Hiring and Recruitment Committee. So you're going to see mention of four things that we focused on as a committee. The folks that I met with first, everyone in Human Resources, and I talked about what I individually met and what we spoke about, various stakeholders and leaders across the district, and of course, the district administrators who make up the majority of our hiring managers. These were the four things that were called out from that data. Most talked about a timeline. Sometimes the timeline is rigid, sometimes there's a little bit of flexibility to it. So we can't approach it thinking, "This is our timeline and this is what we're going to be able to do," because different things implicate the timeline. There are different variables that implicate the timeline as well. So we know we can look at a draft or a model we want to follow for the timeline, but we understand as well that we have to be flexible. Second, a consistent process. Is it the same with regard to expectations and outcomes across all our buildings when we go through a hiring and recruitment process? Are the roles and responsibilities understood as we go through the hiring and recruitment process? And then finally, what aspects, and these are really the enhancements and tweaks that we can consider. Some talked about how they wanted it to be reflective of their building culture when they hire someone or they offer a position to someone. Do they, and are they going to be able to assimilate to our specific building culture? You know that the building cultures are different from one to the next across the six buildings in the district, and some spoke specifically. But that was really based on the frequency of their responses. So from November 7th through January, we really added on another meeting because our work was not finished. We talked about those particular goals and objectives to get through the hiring and recruitment process, and this is just an expansion on what we were focusing on. This is just a better way to articulate what we really were looking at in each of those meetings. So over the course of those meetings, we broke out different goals, and we had different teams of people working collaboratively to address them and then presenting back to the overall committee for consensus on the process. It really was a wonderful collaborative process. We drafted out a timeline. You'll see that it really takes us from September to June, but it never really ends in the HR office. The hiring process is ongoing all the time, and we saw that with a few mid-year vacancies this year. But this, that gave us a good overall model for what we wanted to accomplish. And finally, some process and timeframes that we wanted to stick to, especially deadlines, especially next steps. Guidelines for demonstration lesson has to do with rubrics and seeing demonstration lessons through the same lens where we're rating consistently when we see demonstration lessons. That kind of wraps up our hiring and recruitment process with the committee's work, and the outgrowth of that is a pamphlet of sorts. We are going to continue this work with the administrators and the hiring managers across the district so that it's memorialized. And you'll see mention of that in the future slides. But we want this to be firm, we want this to be consistent. We want the process to be understood and clear for all the buildings across the district. So it's the same, and we understand what our responsibilities are, and we understand what our outcomes are when we have a vacancy in a building. And I shift now to the focus on professional development for other members of our, of our non-instructional staff, and specifically, our teacher aides and monitors. Are we there yet? So we know, and I mentioned already, that the teachers have a firm foundation for their professional development, their mentor process, and that doesn't necessarily exist in our other units or for our other units. People are hired, they're on with us, and individuals will share with them and work with them to make sure that they're getting up to speed with how to operate in their role. But it's not as specific and as comprehensive as our instructional staff. So we wanted to expand our scope of professional development. We wanted, in particular, to figure, how do we make sure members of other units are trained? Okay, so there's mandatory training that has to happen every year, and are we making sure that everyone is trained? And are we monitoring the progress for the training? So there are certain deadlines early on in the year with regard to the training, and you'll see mention of the Global Compliance Network, which is one of the ways that we get all the mandatory training done. And for different units, how that's monitored and how progress is monitored with completing that training. So this is just a overview of what it looks like as a November snapshot on our teacher aides and monitors and the numbers that the approximately 220 employees are represented across the buildings in the district. At the beginning of the year, all the teacher aides and monitors were surveyed to see what it is they wanted to focus on for their professional development. This was new this year. This year, teacher aides and monitors had four hours of mandatory professional development to participate in, and there were some specific things outlined in the contract that they had or they were able to do to accomplish that. It's really important for professional development to be accessible. It's really important to be self-directed, where you have input in what you're learning, and we tried to focus on that through a survey. The results of that survey, you'll see on another slide coming up, helped us prioritize what topics to offer for our teacher aides and monitors early on. So we put the most popular topics in the front end of our schedule for professional development and made sure that we covered those topics first. And lo and behold, we've now gotten to 16 hours that have been offered this year for their four-hour mandatory sessions, and people are asking if they can go to more professional development than the minimum four. That is a wonderful problem to have. But we had published the schedule based on the assistance, and thank you again to my colleagues who signed up to deliver some of this professional development. I actually see one in the audience who, Ms. Stephanie Jones, worked to provide some of her expertise to the teacher aides and monitors on the topic of students with ADHD. So thank you specifically. But yes, different members of our staff, the Teacher Center, administrators across the district, especially in... the district, especially in our special ed department, so thank you to those folks signed up to deliver specific topics to the teacher aides and monitors this year. We also had some outside people, Debbie Gerard, who is not specifically on staff in the same way, but works with our school specifically, with our students with disabilities. Here's where the survey landed, and those four are called out from the right. So you wouldn't really be able to know specifically, these were the most popular topics. And if you look at that, all of it has to do with students with disabilities. So teacher aides and monitors predominantly support students with disabilities in one way or another, and the majority of these topics that they were looking to have offered this year for professional development are in line with that. Again, I mentioned why and how you make sure that professional development is, lands and is conveyed. And first, you start with the relevancy of topics, which is why we use that survey first to prioritize what we offer. Self-directed, so we offered 16 so they can choose and prioritize or make decisions. Some people have things that happen after school that they have to, that they're obligated to, so having the sessions after school can be a conflict for some folks. So we wanted to make sure that they had access, we wanted to make sure they could choose where they're going, and then we monitor individual progress and let them know when they're probably off schedule to complete their hours by the end of the year. Again, I mentioned that some of our own delivered that professional development. You'll see Gina Calasano there, who is talking about positive behavior supports with our audience there on the right. I'll show you a little expose of what these sessions.
Good afternoon, everyone. As we continue with our professional development series for our teacher aides and monitors across the district, hello, welcome back. Today should be a familiar face for you with regard to our presenter. We are going to hear from the Chair for Pre-K to Primary, the Chair for Professional Education, that is Mrs. Gina Calasano from the district. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Gina Calasano.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Hi, everyone. Thank you for taking the time today to sign up for this topic. It is a topic that I am passionate about. I put this quote up here just because I truly believe that the classrooms that you work in and the teams that you work on, it's a matter of collaboration all day, every day, and you're a family, and everybody needs to be on board, sharing a philosophy.
My name is Leslie Ruth. I am the Learning Consultant at Northside. Behavior intervention plans are a really integral part of a teacher aide's job, and behavior intervention plans start with what's called a functional behavior assessment. What this does is puts a plan in place for when you have the behavior. It focuses on positive behavior, and the goal of the VIP is to approve or replace the challenging behavior with something else.
One of the most popular topics was autism, and one of the most popular presenters is here with us today, and that is Debbie Gerard. So welcome, Debbie. Debbie is a behavioral consultant for the district, so a lot of you are already familiar with her. But to do, I'm going to welcome Debbie Gerard. Thanks, Debbie, again, and thank you guys again for your commitment.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, for coming. I know I have been told to look into the camera for all of you who are out there in the other schools, so hi, welcome and welcome everybody here. I'm happy to see the big turnout, and I hope I can live up to your expectations. Many of us are personally touched by autism. I know that many of you know me, I've been in the district since 2005, and you know me. Now, what is Autism Spectrum Disorder, or ASD? It's a spectrum disorder because people with ASD can have a range of symptoms. Individuals have a variety of strengths and difficulties. It means that everybody's different, every child is different. They're first and foremost a child, their diagnosis is second.
So today I'm going to do a presentation on ADHD because we all see these students every day, but what's more important is that we understand those students. So first, we have to know what ADHD is. There's a lot of disabilities in the special ed umbrella, and so it's important that you understand that every disability is not the same, and sometimes they overlap. So ADHD is a developmental disorder. It's associated with an ongoing pattern of being inattentive, hyperactive, and impulsant.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about, it's a tough way to end the day, I got to be honest with you, but we're going to try to understand special education regulations and IEPs, and a lot of you, I'm sure, are special education aides that are here to serve special education students. And how exactly that happens is kind of good to understand, okay? So special education in the United States really started in about 1973. So what is special education? And this is what we're going to start to really talk about as we talk about the IEP. Special education always is what's called specially-designed, individualized, or group instruction, or special services or programs to meet the unique needs of students with disabilities. Each student is provided with an individualized education program.
So you heard mention a couple of times about where people were. In each of the buildings, they're allowed to remain in their home building, because these often start at the end of the day. 3:30, you also heard mention about the time that it was, that the class was in session or the professional development arrow was in session. So we are live streaming, there is an in-person session here at Howitt, and we're live streaming the others across the district so that folks can remain in their building and access that professional development right at the end of the day. Additionally, we worked on how to capture our food service workers with the mandatory professional development in the beginning of the year. So in September, actually on Superintendent's Conference Day, we had 100% compliance for the Global Compliance Network. Those are the tutorials on various topics such as sexual harassment, the Project Save legislation, the suicide and mental health awareness. So there are different things that were mandatory, that everyone had to understand and take part in, and we have 100% compliance because we had the entire group trained over four hours in the beginning of the year on Superintendent's Conference Day. And finally, Mary Rogers offered these three topics to our CSEA staff. All things civil service was done in November on Superintendent's Conference Day, and then the other two on previous professional development opportunities with our CSEA, our clerical So Farmingdale High School, or High School, Farmingdale School's instructional staff is actually approaching 100% compliance with GCN. This is ongoing, as I mentioned. We continue to monitor and remind folks to make sure that this work is completed, because when we, or if we, are asked to provide this information, they want to know that everyone's been trained. So that's been something common that we've shared with everyone. You may have missed the deadline, please get this done. We don't care when you do it, we need everybody trained, and that's been the nudge for monitoring this beyond the early deadline. And as we enter hiring season, I mentioned we want to be able to memorialize the process. There's also information that we're beginning to track this year regarding yield data and acceptance rates. Yield data, and you'll see the percentage of new hires over the months from April to September here, and where this landed. So it's somewhat consistent, except for August, September, and I can explain a little bit about that. In August and September, there's about a six-week lag between board meetings. So if you do have vacancies that you're trying to fill, there's less time to appoint someone. So it's really almost two months' worth of data that we're looking at in that 51%. If you break it down, it really is 25%. So it's still slightly higher than what is consistent, and that's why we were talking about a timeline that allows us to complete some of this earlier. Another issue you may run into in August and September is the candidate pool. Sometimes the candidate pool is not as deep, or you go back out for more, for another process if you're not happy with the candidates that you reach. So this ended with that blip that you noticed in August and September. We want that to occur a little earlier in the hiring process, closer to the early June, end of June, to be done. So that's where we've set our sights this year, and our timeline reflects that, and early March, hopefully, we can start our process. By the way, 100% acceptance rate for the time that we were compiling this data, which means Farmingdale Schools is good stock, because when we offer someone a position, they accept it. So we did have 100% acceptance rate. And a number of the ways that we, this is that last goal that was mentioned in the beginning, how we're utilizing platforms to track annual progress or celebrate some of the roles in the district. We were trying to address some of the teacher aide shortages and assignments around the district. We have been attending job fairs. Mary and I went to a job fair on November 30th at the Freeport Rec Center for non-instructional staff, so custodial maintainers, actually, teacher aides and monitors as well, were people we were trying to recruit at that job fair in early November, end of November. And then, again, in order to memorialize this, we have ongoing discussion with our hiring managers. Just last week, at the Admin Council Meeting with all of them, we gave the artifacts and the work that was synthesized from the Hiring and Recruitment Committee. There are Mary and I at the, at the job fair in November, as I mentioned, at the Freeport Rec Center. There were a number of districts represented, and we had our 15 seconds of fame there.
The folks at Farmingdale School District say they're trying flexible schedules to attract applicants.
We're finding more and more. Yes, I can come in for two or three days a week, but I can't really commit. Come to Farmingdale, we're going to try to make it work.
And the kids make the job so rewarding, there's nothing better than working in a school.
So we will be signing autographs at the end of the board meeting. I'll see you soon. Celebrating employees, next month, you'll know that we are celebrating all employees, all employees who have 24, 25 years or more with the district from their original hire date. So there'll be an extensive list, but we want to make sure that we get that recognition covered next month, and all of them have been invited to attend, and I think you'll be impressed with what we have planned for next month. We have been using email, district email, we've been using social media to cover some of the ways that we recognize the other roles, including our School Board Recognition Week. Again, I mentioned the 25 or more will be recognized in March at the board meeting. One of the other ways that staff are being recognized this year in particular through initiative in the state or in the governor's office was through the healthcare worker bonus to reward and retain people in this profession. So you'll notice that is our healthcare, health office staff in that picture, and they were part of the people that were rewarded for their work, not only during the pandemic, but going forward. So people who are new hires are being incentivized by this program from the state so that they can both reward, recruit, and retain. So this is not a one-shot deal that they did in October, this is ongoing for new hires as well that will be eligible. It's not our money, it comes from the state, but it does get distributed through the district. As I mentioned, social media, so this is the Twitter feed, my Twitter feed specifically, where we recognize school boards and anything else that's good to mention with regard to our employees will be done on that, in that way as well. Over here, our teacher aides and monitors for their commitment to the professional development, which was new this year, so making sure that we draw particular attention where that's due. And as I start to close here, the goals and the indicators of success that we are using to mark our trip are part of a map. And in fact, the mile markers are in many ways our indicators of success. So as we travel on this road, I know you've heard how The Portrait of a Graduate is our North Star, and we have, through both, the Portrait of a Graduate Work and the goals and the indicators of success that we're traveling and keeping track of are going to take us to great places. And I'm really excited about this work in the Human Resources Department. Thank you for your time, and I'll take any questions.
Sam, thank you for such a great presentation. Just one question in terms of the training that you've done for the monitors and, I forget, the aides. How have you seen an improvement in, like, what impact, what positive impact have you seen with this professional development that we've just started to offer to them?
So specifically, this is the first year that they're engaging in the professional development. What I'll know and be able to do is, at the end of the year, to ask them specifically about the impact it's had on their day-to-day. But think about it, it's hard to acknowledge the role that you're in, it's hard to be confident in the role that you're in, and it's hard to grow in the role that you're in in the absence of this type of professional development. So in those three ways, I know that they're going to be miles ahead. But specifically, we'd have to get feedback from them to really compare where they were and where they've gotten to, because there's not really an easy way to put like a number or a label on some of the rapport that might be improved, specifically to student achievement, maybe not, but maybe to the behaviors in a room, maybe to the support that they're providing to the educator in the classroom. So it's hard to say specifically, but you'll know from the response that the teacher aides give how this is landing and how their, you know, value to the organization is something I hope is known from this kind of work. Great question. In one second, let me just finish taking questions from the board.
Me first? Okay. To mirror what Ms. Jones said, fantastic, very informative, I appreciate all that you've done to put this together tonight. I guess to just jump on what Ms. Jones had mentioned, when and how do you plan to gather that information, the feedback from the teachers, aides, and monitors, so that you can look at the grand scope of things and see where, okay, we still need a little more improvement in this, they didn't feel prepared in that, or however it may fall out? Like, what's your plan in gathering that information?
So there are things we're already considering, and for one, we, I will come back at the end of the year to survey all of them again, and then make comparisons to the topics that they want more professional development in or new professional development in. The goal is to create a three-year rotation. So if you already participated in four sessions or five sessions, maybe if you went to one that you didn't have to, and you don't see value in a particular topic or another, but you are seeking value and going deeper in your learning for another, you'll have that opportunity versus offering the same thing every year for three or four years straight. So there'll be people who we are monitoring on a one-year cycle this year, year two, and year three, and then we will flip back to some of the topics that were offered in this year going forward. But the survey from the teacher aides and monitors, we had 156 responses, 156 responses on the beginning-of-the-year survey, so that's a really good dataset to compare the end-of-the-year data and the feedback we get. We've also been getting intermittent feedback on their sessions during the year. So that's going to be where we really gather whether this is working or not. We're also considering a way to establish a mentor program for the teacher aides where someone in the building can be the go-to, one person in the building to be the go-to for people who are hired that are new. Somebody may have been hired tonight or appointed tonight, they start tomorrow. How do we make sure we transition them for success? How do we make sure that they're prepared without having somebody in the building that they're going to meet with in that morning? It's not often that the principal, the assistant principal can walk someone through that first thing in the morning. So we want to be able to establish a program like that that can also be supportive to our teacher aides and monitors. But the data, the feedback is going to come at the end of this year, so I survey it at the beginning of the year to come back and compare at the end of the year.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for doing this, because one of the things that I've heard over the years is the lack of training for our aides in some of our classrooms with some of our student population. And being that our special needs population is growing in leaps and bounds, I hope we can really zoom in on what's needed and have everybody reap the benefits, because I think this is what's to come, and I think the more training we can start doing now with people and mentoring people and so on and so forth, these students will have much more success if the people that are working with them are familiar with what their needs are and how to best service these children. So thank you.
Thank you for that remark. And yes, that's come from their leadership, how appreciative they are of the support that they were getting and have been getting around professional development in particular. So again, there's a value that comes with that as an employee when we are able to provide that and support people in that way. that and support people in that way.
Okay. I'm gonna add three ladies. This is unbelievably, unbelievable. It is well, I'm sure it's well-received. Been talking about this for a long time, so I'm very thankful that, we're very thankful that this is an opportunity for, for people who requested specifically for professional development. So you talked about having a, an idea of what the, what everyone felt about it, like an exit-type poll, that would be great, and if there's other topics that I'm sure we'll look into if someone's interested in it. But I think if, if people are asking for professional development, we need to find a way to find, to get it. And I want to thank, and I'm sure we all do, all the people that took the professional development, as well as those who provided the professional development, and the fact that we, our district, are out there doing that, and, and we very much appreciate that. Long time coming. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, and it's absolutely true, it's caught the eye of, of Bosie's asking about what we're hoping to do and hoping to accomplish. So if we can do it, then it could be a model for other schools to follow. Thank you.
We appreciate that. Does the board have any questions? We will now open the meeting for today's first public participation session.
up on stage, and then anybody else that has a question could use the mic, and we welcome any questions pertaining to this that the community might have. Thank you so much, everybody.
Please be sure to clearly state your name and address when you come to the microphone.
Just give you two more minutes for us to sit back up on stage.
Please note that the time clock will be set for three minutes. All questions and comments should be addressed to me as the board president, and we will take each question as they come, but the mic is open for all of you now. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Sarah Mir. I'm a resident of this community for over 15 years. I love this community. I have three children that go to the school district here myself, and every year we grapple with the same decision, whether we should send our kids to school, or whether we should keep them home on our Eid holiday to celebrate. And I myself am an educator at Farmingdale State College. I'm one of the supervising dentists there, and Eid is a recognized holiday on the academic calendar there, and that gives me such a great sense of pride and inclusivity there. And I'm hoping that you'll give our Muslim students the same sense of belonging and inclusivity by adding Eid to the academic calendar here. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor.
Good evening. My name is DeShawn Sheikh. I'm a father of three. I have three children that go to the school district here in Farmingdale, two kids in Saltzman and one here in Howitt. So yeah, I would like to take a few minutes to speak in favor of approving Eid holidays for Farmingdale School District. Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Adha are two of our most important religious holidays for Muslims and are celebrated by millions of people around the world. They are a time of joy, reflection, and community, and are central to the Muslim faith. By recognizing these holidays as official school holidays, we can show our support to the Muslim community and send a message of inclusiveness and respect. In addition to being the right thing to do, recognizing Eid holidays also has practical benefits for our school district. Research has shown that students perform better academically when they have time off to celebrate their religious holidays and engage with their families and overall communities. This can lead to improved attendance, increased engagement, which are both key to student success. Furthermore, by recognizing Eid holidays, we can help to reduce the stress and anxiety that many Muslim students and families feel around the school year. Many Muslim families are forced to choose between missing important religious celebrations and missing school, which can be a difficult and stressful decision. By recognizing these holidays, we can help to ease this burden and support our Muslim students and families. In conclusion, approving Eid holidays for Farmingdale School District is the right thing to do, both ethically and practically. It sends a message of respect and inclusiveness, and helps support our Muslim students and families, not only across Farmingdale, but along, all over Long Island. I strongly urge you to approve these holidays and show our commitment to a diverse and inclusive community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Yusuf Tirtzanzada. I'm a resident of Farmingdale. So I just wanted to kind of start off and say, I am the eldest of six sons that have attended Farmingdale School District for over the last 20 years, and I'm here today to encourage the board to vote yes and approve both of our Eid holidays, Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Adha, that has been proposed specifically by my mom. I'm the first of my family to experience the inclusiveness, the acceptance, and support from the Farmingdale School District. Ever since elementary school and up until high school, Farmingdale School District has always allowed me to embrace my culture and my religion. From when I was a kid, when I felt out, left out during the holidays, Farmingdale School District always welcomed my mom with open arms to discuss and celebrate our Eid holiday. Then in middle school and high school, as I had my prayer religious obligations, the district never hesitated to embrace me and make me feel comfortable to complete them during school hours or taking time off during the day to go to our Friday prayer sessions. This is what Farmingdale stands for, a place of acceptance and inclusion for all. So tonight, I ask the board to continue this standard and vote yes for both of our holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Defandini and respected board members. My name's Adif Tirtzanzada, and I'm the second eldest of six sons. So in the past couple of months, you've heard from students and fellow brothers and sisters of the Muslim community asking you to give our holiday Eid off in the academic school year. Going through the Farmingdale School District, my entire academic career, I faced these struggles as a Muslim student who took pride in education. So having to struggle whether to take the day off from school and my academics and celebrate with my family in this joyous religious ceremony was very difficult for me. As a child, being here as a Muslim was very difficult in the sense of being accepted. Today, I humbly ask you guys to make that struggle a little bit easier with the fellow students that are growing up into the community now, especially because not only other districts have accommodated this on their behalf by not giving off just one Eid, but both Eids. So I respectfully ask you to please listen to my mom and give us both Eids off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nila Mazzada, and you've met two of my eldest. First of all, I wanted to thank Mr. Defandini, Mr. Zakian, and Mr. Morales, and all of the board members with this journey of trying to Eid on, getting Eid on the holiday calendar. In the last four months, I've learned a lot. I've seen how it feels to be included, I've seen how I can teach my kids to dream and inspire and to ask for change in the proper way. I've spoken to parents, to students, to teachers, to business owners, to government officials, and to be honest, I've never done anything like this in my life. And the response that I have received has blown me away. Every person that I've spoken to has been so open and helpful. I've, I'm a little bit nervous. This is the first time, I don't know, because the decision is coming down tonight, and I'm hoping that both of our holidays, Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Adha, will get approved. And I thank you for your time and the way that you've treated me and my community and all of the Muslim residents of Farmingdale. So please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I don't know. Listen, real simple. Excellent presentation by Dr. Thompson. My only suggestion was when the police department hires or various government agencies hire, sometimes there's a brief period of training, maybe like a week of pre, you're in the fire training for your aides and monitors. That might be something you want to consider besides the in-service training, so they have a few days to acclimate their mind to what they're gonna deal with. I heard someone talk about the many, many special needs students there are now, which is sad to hear, but on that same note, someone being thrown right into the fire may, maybe a few days of in-service. So if you had three or four people that you hired at the same time, bring them into a classroom, have one of your experts talk to them. Just a suggestion, I, you could do with it what you want. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Stephanie Jones, you all know me. I'm a teacher at the high school, and I'm here in support of Justin being in the district since we have such a large population of students with disabilities.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm just gonna cut you off for one second. Just don't mention any student names, but otherwise you can continue.
Well, I'm here in support of helping every child with a disability within the district to be in there. I happen to have been a teacher of this student, and I'm fond of him, and he really is a hard worker, and he was too nervous to come here today, which kind of breaks my heart a little bit, because I think his presence would have made a big impact, but again, I just think that supporting every student regardless, you know, I understand tax dollars and whatnot, but I just think it's important to support every kid regardless of whatever their ability or disability is.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to come up? Okay. Thank you all for your time and for your comments. Mr. Defandini, we forgot to cover old business, so before we move on, is there any old business for you to report upon?
Yeah, just one, one quick item. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Olson. There was a question posed at last month's meeting regarding flipped classroom, and there was a, I think, a healthy conversation that ensued thereafter with the parent and some of our staff members about flipped classrooms. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Olson to provide a little bit of an update, please.
Thank you, Mr. Defandini. Dr. Cummings, our director of science and health, did reach out and spoke with the parent. She said that the flipped classroom model is a research-based instructional method that allows students to encounter information prior to class, freeing class time for activities that involve higher-order thinking. Many chemistry classes across Long Island use this method, because it gives students the opportunity to apply their knowledge in class. Based on the parent feedback, Dr. Cummings and her team have decided to create a flipped classroom guide for the 23-24 school year. This guide will provide students and parents with an explanation of the model and lay out expectations. The purpose of this guide is to support the school-home relationship and clear up any questions parents and students may have at the beginning of the school year. Additionally, teachers will address the model and class expectations at open school night. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Olson. I now call for a motion to approve the January 18 board minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 18, 2023 regular meeting.
All in favor? Aye. Call for motion now to approve the January 24 board minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 24, 2023 special meeting.
All in favor? Aye. Mrs. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this month?
Yes, Mr. Morales. The district had, the Board of Education had received close to 25 letters requesting the inclusion of the Eid holidays on the school calendar.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Are there any committee reports from the board?
Yes, I just wanted to report on a few of the committees that I was in attendance for, and many of our board members were as well. The legal, I'm sorry, Legislative Action Committee met several times, led by Mr. Zakian. We met with Assemblywoman Kimberly Jean-Pierre and Assemblyman Jake Blumencras, and next week, or the week after, we're gonna meet with Senator Steve Rhodes. Suzanne, myself are on that committee as board members. It's quite a interesting, wonderful committee to be on. We meet a lot of nice people and talk about our priorities for our district. The school district is planning on going up to Albany to see our legislators, senators, and visit the Albany, the Capitol Building, and the people up there about, what is the date? I think it's February 28th of this year. So that should be a great trip for our students and our members. PTA Council had their meeting, a lot of, a lot of interesting things going on there, a lot of hard-working men and women on that committee, and thank you, PTA, for all you're doing for our school and our students and, and our community. Farmingdale Youth Council, just wanted to remind everybody again, and I'll do it one more time after this, the community service-based scholarships are, there's two of them, on behalf of Farmingdale Youth Council, $1,000 each. All the information has been in the newspaper, The Observer, and it has been on the Youth Council website, and also in guidance at the high school. In addition to the community service one that the Youth Council offers this year, and I think they did it last year, the Junior League is offering a community-based scholarship, among other scholarships, but this is, is pretty new, at least a year or, or new this year. So have, please spread the word to our high school seniors graduating this year, the money is there, they do the work, so let them benefit from it. So that's all.
Yes, I just wanted to report on a few of the committees that I was in attendance for, and many of our board members were as well. The legal, I'm sorry, Legislative Action Committee met several times, led by Mr. Azakian. We met with Assemblywoman Kimberly Jean-Pierre and Assemblyman Jake Blumenkrais. And next week, or the week after, we're going to meet with Senator Steve Rhodes. Suzanne, myself are on that committee as board members. It's quite an interesting, wonderful committee to be on. We meet a lot of nice people and talk about our priorities for our district. The school district is planning on going up to Albany to see our legislators, senators, and visit Albany, the Capitol Building, and the people up there about, what is the date? I think it's February 28th of this year. So that should be a great trip for our students and our members. PTA Council had their meeting. A lot of interesting things going on there, a lot of hard-working men and women on that committee. And thank you for PTA for all you're doing for our school and our students and our community. Farmingdale Youth Council, just wanted to remind everybody again, and I'll do it one more time after this, the community service-based scholarships are, there's two of them, on behalf of Farmingdale Youth Council, $1,000 each. All the information has been in the newspaper, The Observer, and it has been on the Youth Council website and also in guidance at the high school. In addition to the community service one that the Youth Council offers this year, and I think they did it last year, the Junior League is offering a community-based scholarship, among other scholarships, but this is pretty new, at least a year or new this year. So have, please spread the word to our high school seniors graduating this year. The money is there. They do the work, so let them benefit from it. So that's all I have in my committees. My two minutes are up.
About three minutes ago. Any other committee reports? Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, consisting of items 1A through H, 2A through D, and 3A through D be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Morales, if I might?
Yep.
The Board of Education, again, I probably wouldn't even note that that just happened, but there are a couple of different motions that just occurred and two people in the audience that I think might not know that you were just approved as probationary teachers here in Farmingdale. In the audience this evening, we have Aaron Meyer and Matt Hobbs. If you could just wave to everybody, congratulations, you two. Aaron's going to be starting over at Farmingdale High School as one of our family consumer science teachers, and Matt Hobbs is going to be starting again over at Farmingdale High School as one of our technology teachers. So welcome to the family. Look forward to supporting you in the coming years. Also on this evening's agenda, if I may, sort of round two. He's looking at me, not wondering whether or not I was going to say anything or not, but I know we celebrated Glenn last year. We had some conversations about his appointment, and I just wanted to make mention of a couple of things. And I'm going to bring a little bit of this stuff back again for the second time, but I think it's valuable to make sure that we recognize somebody who's done some pretty special things here in Farmingdale. So I want to take a moment to pay tribute and honor to someone very special to me and to all of us on this stage tonight. I want to take you through a quick journey of Glenn's career and how he has ultimately landed at Daler, and why tonight we are recognizing him as such as he puts in for his retirement effective June 30, 2023. Glenn began his career in education in 1987 while serving as a substitute special education assistant and physical education teacher in the Longwood School District. He eventually landed in the Harborfield School District where he was a physical education teacher and eventually promoted to the coordinator of athletics in 1995 to 2005. Glenn always welcomed the challenge and the opportunity to grow and impact others. In 2005, Glenn was hired as assistant principal at JFK High School in the Plainview Old Bethpage School District. After serving for three years, he was ready for the next challenge. It was then in 2007 when Glenn was a clear finalist here at Farmingdale High School as the principal. As they say, the rest is history. From that moment on, Glenn became the heart and soul of the high school, making deep connections with the students, parents, and faculty. Everyone adored Mr. Z, as they would so notably call him. In 2016, Glenn had established a strong team at Farmingdale High School and also sought a new challenge. His fate would have it, there was a retirement in central office, and Glenn was brought on as the assistant superintendent for Human Resources and Administration. Since 2016, barring the last year, Glenn has taken on the task of working with a great team of dedicated professionals in the HR office to lead one of the largest hiring efforts we've ever had, creating a rebranding campaign with the health of Farmingdale alumni, leading and supporting the team of nurses in the districts through unending and sometimes agonizing COVID protocols. Glenn, professionally, your impact has been profound. And if it weren't enough, once more, my friend into the deep, I called your number to return for one more year as our deputy superintendent to help smooth out this transition. You've been again, you've again been a great support to me and to our team. On a personal level, I've had the good fortune to know Glenn on a very deep level during his time in our schools. Our late-night conversations after the halls were empty and our schools quieted down for the day were frequent. During these quiet times, I got to know Glenn not only as an administrator, but also as the son of Janison Samuel, as the husband of Lori, as the father of Matt, Danielle, and Alexandra, as a teacher and as a coach, and most importantly, as a friend. I could tell you without reservation that Glenn is an exceptional human being. He is kind, he is genuine, he is pragmatic, he is courteous, he is loyal, he is humble, he cares deeply for others. My most important one, he is salt of the earth. In short, he is the kind of person who modeled the behaviors that he expected for those who he had faithfully served for his years. I am a better person, and we are a better school district for having known Glenn all these years of our lives. I wish him nothing but the best as he ventures out into the world in new and interesting ways. No, he will not coming back again for a third time. Always remember, Glenn, that you were loved and admired by your Farmingdale family. Your legacy is secure, and you will always welcome to come home to visit us anytime you like, including Friday night's football games. We'll be on the sideline waiting for you. Please join me in congratulating Glenn on his upcoming and well-deserved retirement. Thank you, Mr. Morales.
Glenn, the only person with a shorter retirement than you last year is Tom Brady, so congratulations on your well-earned retirement. We will definitely miss you. You're the best. Can I have a motion to approve the 2023-2024 school calendar?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District adopt the 2023-2024 school calendar.
And Mr. Azakian, can you please walk us through the school calendar for next year?
Sure. And thank you again, everybody, for the kind words and for being a part of my family for so long. Okay, the 23-24 calendar is a work in progress, and the board has done its due diligence over the last couple of months, reviewing it and your continued input. Each year, we have specific mandated holidays that require observations, and those days, they fall on different days of the week, directly driving the creation of the school calendar and the days of closure on a yearly, on a year-to-year basis. Many school districts were unable to meet the state mandates for the proper number of days of school due to contractual obligations and the addition of various holidays on their calendars. As a result, the state of New York made extraordinary decision to actually extend the last day of school next year. It's typically the third Friday of June, and they have now moved it to the last week of June, the Wednesday of 23-24, or 24, I should say, Wednesday, June 26. This particular calendar for next year was challenging for that matter, as well as the fact that Easter Sunday and Passover, which typically run congruently and formulate what we term our spring recess, are actually three weeks apart, meaning that we needed to account for additional days off that are not typically found on our calendar. The board has represented with a number of drafts. I'd be happy to answer any questions or if you want to address. It's up to your call.
Thank you, Mr. Azakian. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Can I have a motion to approve a request for attendance in district schools of a non-resident student on a tuition basis?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District hereby approves a non-resident admission request by the parents of the student on confidential Schedule A pursuant to Board Policy Number 5152 for the 2022-2023 school year, subject to the subsequent approval and execution of a tuition agreement to be negotiated as further discussed in executive session.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. I'd like to open the meeting at this time for our second public participation session. Again, please be sure to clearly state your name and address when you come to the mic, and please note that the time clock will be set for three minutes. With respect to next year's calendar, just want to let everybody know that we will have Eid commemorated for June 17. So schools will be closed on June 17 in honor of the Eid holiday. And again, if anyone wants to come to the mic, I don't want to take your time. This is our second public participation session.
I don't have to repeat my name, do I? No. Yes?
Go ahead.
Nila Mazzada, and I reside in Farmingdale. Thank you so much for approving our holiday, and I just want to say you guys are amazing. And I'm so sorry that we're going to be losing Mr. Azakian next year. For the short time that I've gotten to know both of you, Mr. Defendini and Mr. Azakian, you guys have been amazing. I haven't met anyone that I've had such great rapport with so fast and early on. So thank you so much for listening to us and making our holiday an official holiday for the Farmingdale District. Thank you.
Dr. Sarah Amir, I just want to say thank you so much. I'm so excited to go home and tell my kids that we can celebrate this year together. I really appreciate it. Thank you for making us feel very included in this community.
DeShawn Sheikh of Farmingdale. I also want to come on and say thank you so much for approving it. And it's a, you know, I want to congratulate the kids who are here today and who were here the past few weeks. Just goes to show you that, you know, if you want something, guys, you have people here that obviously will appreciate your efforts, and we thank you for that. And I think my son wants to say thank you as well.
Yeah, me and my family have been working really hard, and Eid is just a really important holiday. So just to be able to get it off and not having to make the decision between going to school and being with our family and doing our religious practices is just a big relief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for taking the time to speak with us. We appreciate you coming up. We know it's not easy to come up and speak before the board and before your fellow Farmingdale residents. So thank you all for your time, your passion, and your kind words. This time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.